Okay, we're stuck at 25, so I think we're gonna get going. We are recording tonight's Google Meet for Evergreen School reopening. And so, any parent that was not able to attend this evening, we will publish this on a YouTube link tomorrow and we'll send it out through Parent Square, so any parent could get back on, review it, watch it. I will also send out this PowerPoint when I send out the YouTube link. That way you have all the information, all the dates and times that I go through this evening. So hopefully that will be helpful to all of our families moving forward. Just want to thank you all for joining our school this evening. We have a lot of, we have most of our staff on. So I would like to just let our staff know, thanks for attending. Feel free to get on anytime and help with the conversation. Many times, our staff can explain things much better than I can, so feel free at any point. So, again, I'm just gonna, I have about six or seven slides for Evergreen reopening into a hybrid and what that looks like. Hopefully I can answer some questions for you all tonight to make it a little clearer of what it might look like. And then at the end, there'll be some time for question and answer. And any question you have as we go throughout, feel free to get on the chat bar and just ask the question. And then we, we will go through every single question at the end. And so Lindsay will kinda, she'll be kinda feeding me the questions as we go. And I want to make sure that I answer all of your, any thoughts you have or any questions you have. And then, I would also appreciate for next week's town hall, we will meet on Thursday, the same time, 7 o'clock. If there's anything from this that comes out of this that you're wondering, or your kids have questions or concerns, or you have questions or concerns, please email me. And I will add it to next week's town hall, so that we can have that discussion and move through that. Because the reason for these is for you. We want it crystal clear, what we're doing, how we're doing it. We want to be transparent and we want to be, our biggest goal is for our parents and kids to feel like, man, I can't wait for our kid to come back and we feel 100% safe sending them to Evergreen School. So, that's why we're doing that this evening, that's why we're starting. We will have town halls every week until you say stop. And like you're sick of them, we know what we're getting into, no more questions. So whether that's to the end of the year or not, that would be the goal for our town halls, for our community to come together and ask questions. So I will just get started. It shouldn't take more than 20 minutes. And then, we'll just kinda leave it open to some questions and see if we can help each other out. I'm gonna share my screen with you. Can you see that? Okay, awesome. So again, plan to cover the hybrid model, what it looks like, kind of what the operational blueprint entails, and kind of what that document represents for our school and the reopening. We have some safety reminders for returning to school, just want to make sure we are all on the same page. Have some important dates for all of you and kind of the sequence of events of moving into hybrid. Like to give you a general picture of what that soft start orientation week looks like, the week before we start hybrid. And then again, we'll have time for any questions. And so that's kind of what I hope to have happen tonight. So what will hybrid look like? Students will attend two full days a week. So whether, depending on their grade level, if they're a kinder, a second, a fourth, a seventh, and part of sixth, will be Tuesday, Thursday, and those will be full school days, 8:30 to 2:45. And if they, that will kind of make up our A cohort. And our B cohort would be grades 1, 3, 5, 8, and part of 6th grade. And they would attend Wednesday and Friday. Mondays would look similar to what Mondays are now. We haven't fully discussed exactly what that would look like, but that's really a teacher planning day and prep day for the week. It will be possibly a really good day to get all of our kids on together. You know, they see each other every day together now, and now they'll be kind of half and half. And so that'll be a day to kind of reconnect and have that class meeting together in the mornings. Again, Tuesday through Friday will be regular school hour, so 8:30 to 2:45. And masks and six-foot distancing, of course, enforced on campus for all staff and all students all day. That includes PE recess, every piece of our school grounds. And then, our staff, our teaching staff will kind of square you away as we go on what schedules look like for the day and students and what they should be bringing back with them, supplies, all that kind of stuff will be coming your way very, very soon. And we only have a couple students that are, that are going to remain in distance learning, which is kind of where we are right now. But I kind of wanted just to, if your family chose to remain in distance learning, or CDL, comprehensive distance learning, of course, your child would have a different teacher, wouldn't be an Evergreen staff member. It might look like a similar day, but again, it would be a different teacher, it would be a different program. I couldn't tell you exactly what that looked like. We think it would be a much harder transition, but we understand what all families are going through and teach each their own. But if you wanted to have a phone to call, a conversation with myself, there's a link there of kind of what it looks like, but we could talk that through of what that looked like for you and your family and your students, if that was something that you were choosing to do. What is the operational blueprint? It's basically a guide that guides our school from top to bottom of when kids return, what do we need to be putting in place in all aspects of our school? So it's a 26-page document that keeps me up many hours of the night. And, you know, it's really important for us to get that right. You know, it falls on me if we don't. And I know our staff is fully committed to understanding that blueprint, doing what it takes for our kids to come back safely. It talks about busing, what Durham transportation, how far kids are apart on the bus, how much the bus is sanitized. It talks about recess, it talks about playgrounds, it talks about classrooms, it talks about lunch. It talks about ventilation in classrooms. I could go on and on, but it's every single piece of what it would entail for a kid to come back to school safely. And we have a plan in place for every single piece of that. And as we go, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we as a staff and as a blueprint committee, we have some parents on that blueprint committee. We have myself, we have our teachers, we have our support staff, we have our district nurse on that team. That team kind of determines what our school looks like. And we'll be meeting again in the next week. We met earlier to kind of kick back the hybrid and get going. And we've done a lot of work on that the last couple of weeks. And so we'll bring that committee back together to say, here is kind of our final product, is everyone feel good about that? And then I will take that to our school board, our superintendent, our district cabinet. They will walk our school from top to bottom. And they will say yes or no, your school is ready or not. And I can guarantee our school's ready. But that will happen in the next week and a half when that tour and that visit happens. But that's kind of, the blueprint is from Oregon Department of Education and Oregon Health Authorities. They give us 26 pages of guidance. And then we give them 26 pages of how we're gonna handle that guidance and how as a school, we're gonna make sure that we do that correctly. When that is finalized, we will put that to our website. I will send it to you through email. I want to make sure each one of you have the opportunity, if you'd like to read that. It's very interesting. And, you know, it's, I, there is a lot of red tape and probably for a good thing, right? But some days, like I said, it keeps me up many hours of the night trying to figure out how we're gonna accomplish it all perfectly. And I can tell you right now, we're not gonna be perfect, but we're gonna be diligent and we're gonna give it our very best, like we would ask our parents and our kids. I can't tell you if a kindergartner's gonna walk across the playground and touch another kindergartner. We're gonna teach, we're gonna model, we're gonna keep teaching. And, you know, I can tell you, we're gonna be vigilant and give it our very best, so. Safety information, we talked about masks. Masks for every kid, every day, all through the day. There are a few exceptions through OHA and some kids with some medical prognosis or maybe some things that a doctor has written a note, why they would need a face shield instead of a mask. Gators are acceptable, they're the big long ones, but they have to be double covered over the mouth and nose. Masks covering the mouth and nose at all times. Just know that we are gonna have many, many opportunities throughout the day for mask breaks. Kids will have water at their desk. Anytime they feel like, oh man, I need to, they pull their mask off and they drink some water. There's plenty of time. Our kids are gonna be the most hydrated kids ever, because they're gonna want to take their mask down quite a bit. And it's fine. They can take their mask down anytime they want at their desk, six-foot spacing, and take a drink of water or a quick snack and put that mask back on. If they're outside on the track and they are six feet spaced and no one is within their six-foot realm and they want to pull that mask down for a mask break, go for it. And there'll be a mask break spot in every room for a kid that just needs to get up at the desk and go back and pull their mask off, anytime they want. Well, I better not say that. I see our teachers, they're, anytime the teacher says, yes, you may go back to that desk, they are able to do that. We are gonna be hand washing a lot, like they're gonna need lotion when they come home, for sure. Every time they enter our building, we enter a classroom, we're done with recess, we're done with lunch, we transition to a new activity, sanitizer, hand washing. We will meet them at the door in the morning, we will meet them at the car line. And our kids will just be sanitized, I promise you, and they'll be clean. So, and just know, like, I have never seen a school year, knock on wood, that has been this healthy. Like, our staff hasn't been sick, I mean, our kids aren't sick. I have not been sick for 10 and a half months. Anytime there is a cough, a cold, a temperature, a sore throat, a headache, we should not be sending our kids to school. Right? So, like, every kid coming to school is healthy. We're six feet distance with a mask and we have many safety parameters put in place. So, we are asking our parents, please be vigilant on that. Just because the Tylenol takes them below 98.6, that does not make them healthy. If we have to give them Tylenol because of that, they shouldn't come to school. I've done that many times with my own kids, so that's why I left. So, we should be in really good shape with safety protocols. No visitors will be allowed on campus, as much as we love our parents and our visitors and our helpers in classrooms. That's just gonna be kind of done this year. Speech therapists, ELL, you know, the kind of educational people that we need to enter our building will be kind of our only visitors to finish the year. And then, we want our kids to dress warm every day, because air ventilation is super important. So we'll have some windows open and we'll have, we've had every bit of ventilation in our school checked and any spot that didn't meet a certain requirement, we have new filters and new ventilation systems put into place in our schools. So, I just want to let you know that. Here's the dates moving forward. Just remember that Monday, this coming Monday, is a school day. I know on the calendar in many schools, my own son goes to Sublimity, they don't have school Monday, we do. We are lucky, our kids get to learn. And we've wiped out so many days because of the fires and different things that we've added back some holidays. So Monday is a school learning day for our kids and our staff. The 18th is our next town hall, so we'll meet every Thursday from here on out at 7 o'clock. The 19th, I know we've had limited in-person instruction happening in all of our classrooms, but the 19th is our last day for K5. So if your student is in a limited in-person instruction at this point, the district has stated that the 19th is the last day. And our school has to prepare for hybrid, so it's given our classrooms and some time and our teachers to turn around and prepare for that. So, we are done with that then. The 22nd through the 26th is kind of our final school facility preparation to get ready for hybrid. February 25th will be another town hall. March 1st through the 5th is orientation week for our K5, and I'll kind of explain what that looks like. K5 and 6-8 will be identical, similar, maybe I should say not identical. And then, our hybrid begins March 8th, which is really the March 9th, which is that Tuesday. And then March 12th is the last day for Mr. Murphy's limited in-person instruction. And then he'll, our 6-8 will have an orientation week, March 15th through the 19th, and then spring break, and then our 6-8 hybrid begins after spring break. So we'll teach our whole 6-8 what that hybrid looks like. They'll have a whole week of spring break and forget it all. And then they'll come back the following week and we'll reteach them, because Mr. Murphy's used to that. So, those are kind of the dates moving forward. So what does the orientation look like? Why are we having an orientation week? Why can't our kids just get into the Dane School now? I think it's important for you to understand, it isn't a regular year. There is actually a lot to teach, 26-page blueprint that we have to kind of take our kids through. So, what that orientation week looks like is Monday and Tuesday will be kind of similar to what they're doing now. It'll be online, but our teaching staff will be doing much more teaching about what it looks like with PowerPoints, with videos, with our school. We'll be sending, we'll be showing them pictures of what our school looks like, what the playgrounds, what lunches look like, how those look different than they have in the past. And we'll be taking our kids through the entire school, those two days virtually, with some learning. And then we plan on bringing the kids to full days, Wednesday and Thursday of that week. So running the buses, having parents drop off and pick up that day. Those will be full days of school. And so we'll, we want to connect our kids. So this will be class interactions, there'll be SEL activities. And then we will actually walk, be walking our kids through our entire campus facility, I know it's huge. And kind of showing them exactly what space looks like, what a six-feet looks like, what do PE look like, what does lunch look like? And everything from walking down the stairs to classrooms to mask breaks and having full days. And then Friday will be back to the last day of comprehensive distance learning. And we understand that that's, that's gonna be an important day for our staff, because we've actually now had the kids two days in school, both cohorts, and we have a lot to learn. So it's gonna be a great day for our staff to come back, debrief, where can we get better? Celebrate what went really well, and then move into the next week with a full hybrid schedule. So that's kind of what orientation and our soft start looks like. And that is kind of what I had for you this evening. I didn't want to throw too much at you. Again, we have two or three more town halls before kids start, so there's plenty of time to answer questions. And kind of go from there. Again, I would love for next week, after tonight, if you have some things come up or your kids have questions, or there's any anxiety, or there are certain topics you'd like me to cover, please send those my way and I will add those to our agenda for next week. But if there's questions right now that we could start with, Lindsay, that would be wonderful.
All right, so the first one that came through was, do kids have calls on their at-home days?
Well, at this point, yeah, hybrid's gonna look totally different than CDL, because our teaching staff is now teaching eight hours a day, depending on which cohort they have in front of them. So the only calls there would be, would be if they were working with a support staff from a classroom. So if, you know, Mrs. Barikoff or Mrs. Hipsch or Mrs. Lindstrom was helping work with a student that was on a day that they weren't in hybrid at school, those could be some of the calls that were happening. And, you know, we understand that kids get stuck and they're at home all day. And what happens if my student doesn't know what to do? And those are what we're gonna be using our support staff for, is to be helping answer those questions, be online for students that have questions, maybe some small group instruction if it's needed, and some help that way. Hopefully that answers your question.
Hey Jamie, would you mind stopping your screen share first?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. So the next one was, school starts at 8:30, how early will the gates be open?
Just like a normal school day, 15, gates will be open. And actually, they're open a little bit before that. And kids can be on the playground, but the doors of the school building open at 8:15. Staff, feel free to help me answer that one, if you'd like.
I will say that, well, and I'm not sure what I'll be doing this year, or this spring, but for me, when I'm managing car duty in the morning, it's hard for me to manage the playground too. So, I'm not sure, yeah, that might be a little bit, I don't know if other teachers have suggestions.
Yeah, usually it's 8:15, and that's when our building opens up to students.
Let's see, so kids have to have approval before using a face shield?
Yes, all students need to be in a face mask or a gator that is double gated. Face shields are not acceptable. And unless it's from a doctor's note, or they have a health risk or health management that is worked out through our nurses at our school. But it is a mask or a gator at all times.
And there's just a question about what lunch in PE will look like?
Lunch will look like any normal lunch. Kids will eat in their classrooms. And we are asking that families send any food that comes, we will not be using microwaves. And so it needs to be a true cold lunch. And we are asking that students, we can't have teachers go help students open certain things or can't get chips open or certain things. So we are asking that parents really diligently set that lunch up, so that students can self-manage. There'll be six feet at their desk eating lunch like regular. They just won't be up throughout the classroom, heating up in a microwave and going that route.
I guess I'll interject with a hot lunch coordinator comment. There won't be any hot lunch for the rest of the year too, so, just so you guys know that also. Let's see, how can kids socialize, make friends?
You know, they're gonna do that all day, and I think that's what they're excited about. They're gonna do that in classrooms, they're gonna do that. Teachers have great teaching strategies where kids are gonna be learning. I've watched Ms. Buckley's and Ms. Miller's and Mrs. Poole's and Mr. Murphy's class already with kids coming in lippy. They have kids working together and rolling dice side by side, playing interactive games, six feet apart. There'll still be recess in PE and kids can play together at recess. And they just have to kind of social distance and there's like no tag or anything like that. But they're still talking, laughing, playing with each other all day long.
How do they talk to each other?
Louder. It'll just be louder, because they'll be six feet apart. I had, I had two students in class today that were playing Sumdog and they can play each other on the game. And it's just louder, and that's just the way it's gonna be.
That's true. James told me, he said he was trying to talk to his friend, but she couldn't hear her.
You know, just like anything, I think, our, like, we struggled with that as a staff to start. Like, we'd be taught, what'd you say? We couldn't even, but I think you learn how to project your voice pretty well. And I'm seeing kids talk to each other all day. So, and I know Jay, he's such a sweet kid, but he's gonna have to get louder if he wants to talk to his classmates. And they're gonna have to get louder, so he can hear them. And we will work on our big kid voice, so. Any other thoughts from families or questions or things you've been thinking about that would be good for the entire group to kind of? Staff, do you have anything that you want to interject, just from what has happened so far? Just with kids coming back to class and any, anything that you have for our parents that good of the order that might help alleviate anything about masks or, I don't know. You have them in your class each day now, so.
Well, we just do just what we talked about. We use our mask voice. They're being very aware of what six feet is. I put a piece of measuring tape that I have on the counter and it shows that the counter is six feet long. So, we're into our measuring units now, so they're gonna have a real sense of length and space. Part of what happens in my classroom is, I'm gonna kind of give the kids, here are the things we have to do, how are we gonna do it? And give them some power in how we follow the rules of being at school during this time. I think including them in the process is really important. And they are much more creative in their ideas. So it's just, it's wonderful, you know, we probably won't be able to do them all, but we will have a really good time getting there.
You know, our goal, our ultimate goal, kids have not been in school for 10 and a half weeks, or 10 and a half months. And in order to get them back full-time next year, we gotta figure out how to get them back two days a week and do it safely. And our goal is to give them the best end of the school year they possibly can have. And we're gonna make it the most fun, the most energetic, we're gonna have masks, no masks, wherever we're at, these kids deserve a great end of the school year. And our staff deserves, and our parents deserve. And I just want you guys to know, we'll do everything we can for your kiddos to have them back, to have them socially interacting with each other and doing it in a way that is safe and that we are held accountable at a high level of how we're interacting. And we're just super excited.
I'm seeing more questions. Okay, I just had someone say, thank you so much for all your dedication and diligence on behalf of all of our kids. It's clear you care so much. And then, thank you so much, I really appreciate all of you. Thank you so much to the staff for all your hard work. You're welcome. We love you all.
I'll just end with, we were talking as a staff the other day in a staff meeting about this coming back and how, I think I said, man, this has been, I've been in education 25 years. This has been one of the toughest years I've ever had. And, you know, I had a staff member remind me, like, this isn't my toughest year. I've had tougher years, because I've been in places and I've had a staff I've had tougher years because I've been in places and I've had a staff and parents that weren't like Evergreen staff and parents. And I've had much worse years and, and I under, he, he kind of put me in my place uh, of, of just really understanding where we are, where we've been. But really, honestly, how lucky we are to be at our school with our staff and our parents and you know, it, it put it in perspective for me. So I'd just like to thank all of our parents for sticking through it with us and supporting our, our staff and supporting your kids. And I've heard of many of you how tough it's been and, and we, we understand, so. But we're getting close and we're getting the kids back and, um, we're, we're hoping for five days a week and to where lives can go and jobs can handle and you don't have to stress out every day where your kids are going to be and how they're going to get there. And we're going to get them back. So this is a great step. Any other questions like we can answer tonight? Uh, again, we'll, we'll meet next Thursday at seven o'clock. And please send the questions, uh, my way through some email or, or one of your teachers or support staff, and they will get it to me and we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.
Have a great night.